Good evening and welcome to the Monday, January 26, 2015, meeting of the Florissant City Council. I would ask you to join, stand and join the council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we start, if there's anyone that would like to speak at the Hearing from Citizens section of the meeting, and it's not related to a public hearing we have on the agenda for this evening, I would ask you to complete a yellow speaker card, which is located on the table next to the entrance of the chambers, and forward it to Mr. Hessel for our attention. Roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hanky, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputa, Shildroff.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Mr. Shildroff moves to approve the minutes of the meeting on January 12, 2015. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. Item five, communications, and I see none in our communications. Ben? Excuse me. Item four, hearings from citizens. If you would like to make a statement at this portion of the meeting, I would ask that you fill out a speaker card, and again, hand that to Mr. Hessel. Kevin O'Donnell. Mr. O'Donnell, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Ward 4. I'm here this evening with a security breach concern regarding the city's website, florissentmo.com, and the security of email addresses received by the city, both on the subscribed newsletters from the city, in forms of press releases, and in correspondence to the city. On January 20, 2015, I received an unsolicited email from an email address, SchneiderForMayor@gmail.gov, gmail.com. I've never solicited this email address in my life. I've never had any contact with this email sender, so I'd like to know how secure our email addresses are when sending email to the city or signing up for the city newsletter. I would appreciate a written explanation from the IT Director, the IT Director's Assistant, the city clerk, and the city attorney. And I would appreciate a 72-hour response as afforded by me. I'm not the only person who has sent this unsolicited email, which could have only come from one source, which is the city's mailing address. According to the privacy conditions on florissentmo.com, no private information shall be lent, sold, or given away for third parties for marketing or mailing list purposes. I look forward to receiving four responses from the aforementioned people. Also, I've got here, there's section four, how we use your information and how we share your information. This is the email that I received from SchneiderForMayor@gmail.com. And I just, I'd just like to know, I want to know the legalities of this before I take this any further. And, but this, right now, I see a breach of confidentiality and sharing of email addresses from the city to a third party on a mailing list that did not deserve this. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Before we close this portion of the meeting, is there anyone else in attendance not here to speak on a public hearing that would like to make comment? Seeing none, we'll close the Hearing from Citizens portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is communications, and there are none. Next item on the agenda, public hearings. Public hearing 15-01-001.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant and St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 955 Rous Saint Francois on Monday, January 26, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To issue an amendment to B5 Ordinance Number 7738 to allow for the addition of a barbecue cooking area for a sit-down carryout restaurant for the property located at 8471 North Lindbergh. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. I'm assuming you are the petitioner. If so, please state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Vaden Maddexera, 1251 Gilbert Lane, Creve Court, Missouri 63146. And I'm here to present our plans.
Very good. So you might actually have to move that microphone up, or you can actually hold that so we can hear that. If you need to use the overhead projector next to you, feel free to do so. And you have the floor, sir. There we are.
Sorry you got the copies very late. I was on a business travel. The only three changes we have made here were on the recommendations based on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Baranowski had made two recommendations, that we labeled the drive-through window appropriately as pickup window, and we have made that correction. We have changed the seating from 23 to 27, which is the right amount of seating there. And the third change has been made on the recommendation of Mr. Phil Lum. He wanted us to put ballards right outside the proposed smokehouse, which is the second page. We have made those corrections as well. I just took the liberty to add a third page to it. Mr. Weller, Mr. Weller was concerned with the smoke issue of the place, and we discussed it briefly. First, I will put five barbecue pits out there, and I explained that it's pretty much the smoke, the way we cook our barbecue is only in the beginning, early in the morning when we start it up. Once the fire catches on, it's, the smoke is nothing compared to, or anything more than what you'd see in a regular restaurant, a Burger King or McDonald's or anything. But I, I think we made the change here. This wasn't there. We attached a new addendum, showing the four barbecue pits instead of five, and explaining where the exhaust fans are going to be on the roof, and a working table. These are the only changes we made, nothing else.
Do me a favor and explain a little bit about your business, the hours of operation. Obviously, it's going to be barbecue, the type of food you serve and such, please.
So we were a very successful restaurant in Ferguson, Missouri, and planning to move to Florissant, hopefully soon. And business, the business model, what we thought we will do here, change it up a little bit. Instead of opening up seven days a week, we want to stay open only four days a week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But again, this is just open for public, and based on the recommendation I had, we put seven days on there, just in case. We need time to prep and stuff. Hours of operation would be 10:30 in the morning till 10:30 at night. But we cook earlier, so based on that recommendation from Planning and Zoning as well, we start at 5:00 in the morning, so we've put there in the plans as well the hours of operation, because we start up the pits. But for public, we open only after 10:30. And it's, it's your typical carryout barbecue, good barbecue, fast food restaurant, and hopefully we'll open up soon and make Florissant a new home.
I, that's my ward, and so I'm obviously maybe a little more concerned than the other council people are. Can you describe the barbecue pits to me?
Yes. We have these 5,000 gallon average, say, drums or propane tanks, which are circular in shape. And these are self-contained, basically. It has no outlet for grease outlet or anything. It's practically all the ash. We cook on charcoal, so all the ashes and the grease are contained in the barbecue pits itself, and we clean those out every night. And we dispose the charcoal in a special, all steel, separate, it's like a big receptacle, trash receptacle, a two-by-two, a standard receptacle. We cool the charcoals, we dispose of the charcoals in there. And cleaning is not, again, it's not, the smoke and the cleaning would be issues with smoke earlier in the morning, as I mentioned. It's only when we start the fires up, and it's just the nature of the charcoal. It's, when you light it up, it will, you'll see the smoke, but once it's caught on fire, it's normal. And cleaning is also self-contained. I mean, it's not, there's no spill of charcoal or grease or anything on that.
Will you be augmenting with any wood, the charcoal?
No, no, just charcoal.
Will you be serving any alcohol?
No.
And therefore won't allow any be used on the premise, correct?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, you said you'd be cleaning the pits out every night?
Yes.
Would that be going in regular trash cans, or the disposal?
No. So the pits are, it's only charcoal ash in there, what, in the pits. The meat, we take, we pull the meat off, we don't, you know, process the meat on the pits itself. We cut those, we chop it up, so that will be separate cleaning. The pits itself, when the charcoal burns out, it's all ashes. The grease is self-contained in there as well. We just scrape it out.
So the coal ash is going into regular dumpsters?
No. We, I order a special steel container, trash receptacle, that we, and that's why there's a proposed addition of a trash enclosure there. We don't put it in there directly. We put those in aluminum cans. We let it cool down, then we dispose it off in there. And that, we don't put any trash in there. That's a whole separate.
Okay. And how often will that be picked up?
As soon as it fills up. So it's, if it fills up every week, they'll pick it up every week. But we make sure before it goes in there, there's no, it's nothing but charcoal ash in there. But we cool it down and throw it in there.
Mr. Lee?
Okay, you explained the drive-in's going to be a pickup window only. That's, that's good, answering my one question. The menu board that's there now, that'll come out, because that's where you're going to be putting your food prep area, okay? And without really being able to see it, there's still going to be enough room for cars to get around there?
Yes.
And, okay, it looked like it would on the old map, but I was just wanting to make sure of that. You've received already, I believe you've already received the variances through St. Louis County for the outside food prep?
It happens only every quarter, first Monday, first, I think first or last Monday of the quarter.
Right.
So that will be in March. And based on my history, mine was a model restaurant for them, when they started doing the variants back in 2011. So based on that, I mean, I'm pretty sure.
And looking at what you submitted, it appears that you're going to meet everything. It's just a matter of the formality of going through the, through the commission, so. And you answered my other question. So you are, you are the Reds that was the great place in Ferguson that unfortunately had the, so, welcome to Florissant. We look forward for you getting in, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. I don't see any signage on this. What, what type of signage you're going to have, or are you, what are you going to use? Are you going to use lies the existing signage that Dunkin' Donuts had, or what?
There is no, the existing signage on the Dunkin' Donuts signage is gone. We're still debating what is, what is cost efficient. I'm still in the process of getting bids for it. So I have, either it will be a standard, a box sign, the light backlit, you know? I don't know the proper term for it. Letter sign, letter sign, or I might have a neon sign. But whatever is compliant with the city codes will have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Shildroff? The, the board that is going to be behind the smoker, you have a menu, a new menu board there, is that correct? You're tearing the old one out, correct?
We will tear the old menu board out, and there will be no board on.
There's no board there. So there's not going to be any speaker to, for the people to talk, and they'll just pull up to the window and tell you their name or their order number, what have you?
Yes. It's, it's, one in, maybe 10 customers would call in the order, and they say about in 15 minutes, just pick it up at the window.
When do you anticipate you'll be open?
If everything goes according to the plan, and the place is in pretty good shape, probably first week of April, and that's given, because the variance, outdoor variance in St. Louis County happens end of March. So once that is out of the way, hopefully first week of April.
All right, very good. Well, I know that barbecue is one of the most growing food trends in the country. And Ward number three there, we have a lot of different restaurants in a short amount of space. We have Thai, we have American, and we have, we did have Mediterranean, so welcome to Ward number three, and we hope this works good.
Thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Mr. Hernandez moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public hearing number 15-01-002.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 955 Rous Saint Francois on Monday, January 26, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to AJB's Barbecue LLC DBA AJB's Barbecue to allow for the operation of a carryout delivery restaurant for the property located at 18 Patterson Plaza Shopping Center. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. I'm assuming you are the petitioner?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. My name is Anthony Barber. Good evening, everyone.
And your address, Mr. Barber, for the record?
4827 Muse Drive, 63033.
Very good. The floor is yours. Let's hear about your business.
I propose to have a carryout barbecue place at 18th and Patterson, at Patterson and Replaza there. I plan on having a grass-fed beef, natural pork, gourmet popcorn, some specialty sandwiches. I've been in the hospitality business all my life. I've been a barber for 18 years, so customer service and hospitality is my, who I am. I grow my own food. Food's very, a very serious thing to me, because I had health concerns, so I just, the first thing, if you put quality in, you'll get quality out. I love working with the public. I grew up in the restaurant business here in St. Louis. I moved to Chicago in 1975. I had a restaurant there at 19 years old for about 12 years, yeah, and we did well. And this is my proposal. We, this location is next door to Nagels, which I consider a Florissant institution. It's next door to a dance studio. It's kind of an eclectic mall there. But I think we'll fit in fine at that location. And first things first, I can't wait to get started. Our barbecue pit is a self-contained unit. If you've been to Dearburg's, the residual smoke that comes out of these units that work, that fit on the inside, is very anomalous, very little smoke that comes from it. The ash, the same concerns that, right, you would let it, you know, cool to a safe temperature, put it in a safe receptacle, and discard it, like, you know, with safe, safety in mind. Other than that, like I said, I can't wait to get started. So just first things first. Anybody got questions or concerns? I know I'm a little hyper, but that's the way I am.
Very good. I went by there earlier today to take a look at the property myself. You're going to be doing indoor smoking, is that correct?
Indoor smoking. It's basically kind of like a convection oven, but it's amended by wood. I'm a Missouri oak guy myself. I know a lot of people do a cherry wood, or hickory, or, you know, those type of things, but I just really like the essence of the Missouri oak with my barbecue.
And I asked, as a gentleman before you, no alcohol consumed or sold on site?
No alcohol consumption, no alcohol consumption. You know, like you asked him if even on the grounds are concerned, yeah. Especially my customers, right, to let them know that we will respect the property. Plus, there's children right there with the dance studio and that kind of thing, so, you know, keep it clean, keep it clean.
Very good. Before I open this up to the rest of the council, I got to ask this. Who's better, your barbecue or this fellow's, huh?
Well, we have different barbecue. We have different barbecue. The gentleman that Red's barbecue, I take my hat off to what Red barbecue did and what he created. Any small business person that creates a name and a business model for themselves, I like that. It's encouraging to see business people do things and be successful at it. So he's not going to have burnt ends. Burnt ends, I'm going to have burnt ends. So that'll be, that's our difference, okay? Absolutely. And a ton of rib tips, yeah.
I can see this as the next taste of Florissant. Mr. Caputa, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Barber, how you doing tonight?
Fine today, yourself.
When I spoke with Mr. Barber a couple weeks ago, when he first got ahold of me, he explained that he likes to use local products, fresh produce grown locally, and I think that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
I think a lot of, a lot more restaurants should be getting involved in doing local produce and local meats and everything. I think that is very good. And, and having a contained, indoor contained pit, the way you explained to me, the way it was going to be set up, very good. And another thing that he mentioned, he would like to have a food truck, too. So in the future, he'd like to get a food truck going with his barbecue, and I think that's awesome. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Ms. Pagano?
Hi. What will be your hours of operation?
My hours of operation will be, I ask from 9:00 to 10:30, but probably 11:00 till 10 o'clock will be the approximate hours that we will operate.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week, as it stands.
Mr. Lee? And sir, if you could talk into the microphone for the recording, please?
All ready?
Okay, the hours of operation, Ms. Pagano, you answered that. I'm going to reiterate, okay, the burnt ends for sure, and the rib tips, are we both doing rib tips? So we'll have a little competition going?
Well, like I said, I'm a Missouri oak guy, and I don't know, he's charcoal, so it's a little different in there, yeah, a little different. And the sauce is different. The sauce is different, yes.
Welcome to Florissant. Look forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Sir, if you'll state your name and your address for the record, I would appreciate it.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Ward 4. I didn't catch your name.
Anthony Barber.
I thought, I thought you said Barber, but you said you, I thought you said Barber.
Licensed professional barber also.
Does that mean you're going to have shaved beef, too?
There's a possibility.
I mean, you can have shaved beef, you know, and then if you're not busy, get a shaved head or something.
You know, I'm going to do a chalk menu, so we can do, we can change the menu. It can be a minute, you know, not by name and product.
What is your price range?
Well, price range, I will be in a nominal price range. I mean, in the same ballgame as my competition with Dickies, with Sugarfire, with Mandana's, we'll all be in line with those prices, you know? And beef prices and meat prices have been on a high fluctuation and escalation lately, so, but it will be market price.
And you're going to deliver, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yes, sir. And also plan on having students from culinary schools that live in the Florissant area to come and work in that environment, you know? I mean, I just think the talent and just the energy will be something that will make a difference.
That's good. I'll start going to culinary school.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Shildroff moves to close the public hearing. That's seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good luck, Mr. Barber.
Thank you all. Pardon me? Well, after the, these procedures processes over, if they sign off, February, February 9th day, I have a three-month of bill time. So I basically want to be within that window. I don't know why I want to get in front of the mic here. Yeah. But it's, I got three months to build after completion of the, these proceedings, and first things first.
Good deal. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again. The public hearing will be closed.
All right. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you.
Public hearing 15-01-003.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers, 955 Rous Saint Francois, on Monday, January 26, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Enterprise Leasing Company of St. Louis LLC DBA Enterprise Rent-A-Car to allow for the operation of a vehicle rental facility for the property located at 1101 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. Sir, if you'll be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
My name is Tim Hoff. I'm the operations manager for Enterprise Rent-A-Car. The address is 10144 Page Avenue, St. Louis, 63132.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Enterprise Rent-A-Car has a lease agreement for the space located at 1101 North Highway 67 in Florissant, Missouri. The city of Florissant requires a special use permit for Enterprise to operate a vehicle rental facility at 1101 North Highway 67. Enterprise currently operates a vehicle rental facility in Florissant at 1090 North Highway 67, which is directly across the street. If the special use permit is granted, we would relocate our existing vehicle rental operation from 1090 North Highway 67 to 1101 North Highway 67. Our plan shows the space we will be utilizing on the southern portion of the building and property. The space is approximately 3,000 square feet, which would accommodate our office, lobby area, and a car wash bay. Enterprise has been in the city of Florissant for a long time, and in our current city, in our current facility since 1999. We look forward to working with the city of Florissant to open up this new location. Thank you.
When you, when you talk about a car wash bay, are you going to add, is it going to be inside, or is that?
It's going to be inside. And it will, it will not be a mechanized bay. It'll be a bay with an oil-water separator and a drain that is a manual car wash for rental vehicles only.
All right, very good. And what hours of operation would you be running your rental from, the same as current?
Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 6:00. Saturdays and Sundays, potentially from 9:00 to 3:00.
Mr. Hanky?
Yes, just as a point for you, actually. I recently, not too long ago, had an issue with your existing location and some parking with the neighbors in the neighborhood. And to you guys' blessing, you immediately took care of it, and it has not been a problem since. I want to thank you for that, for being receptive to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Mr. Lee moves to close the public hearing, as seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the public hearing will be closed. Next item on the agenda, old business. Bills for second reading, Bill Number 9056. Mr. Hanky makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I would, rather than voting for a second reading, I'd rather propose a motion to postpone this to our next meeting.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion to postpone this to the next meeting, which is February 9, 2015. That is seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? 9056 will be postponed until February 9, 2015. Thank you. Bill 9063, 9063. Mr. Hanky makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance amending Table 18A of the Florissant City Code by adding eastbound St. Dennis at Jefferson and on Jefferson in front of Sacred Heart Church on Saturday from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and on Sunday from 6:00 PM to 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Hanky makes a motion for a third reading. That is seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance amending Table 18A of the Florissant City Code by adding eastbound St. Dennis at Jefferson and on Jefferson in front of Sacred Heart Church on Saturday from 4:00 at Jefferson and on Jefferson in front of Sacred Heart Church on Saturday from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Sunday from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this matter, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Sir, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Ward 4. I was just curious, does that just mean no parking?
Just handicap parking.
Pardon me?
It's handicap parking.
Okay, but I mean, it says adding an existing lane. How can you add an existing?
No lane.
Pardon me?
Just handicap parking.
It says adding an eastbound lane at St. Dennis at Jefferson. So, how can you add a lane of, does that mean no parking?
Mr. Hinky.
What it says is adding eastbound St. Dennis. There's no mention of a lane. Okay. It says eastbound St. Dennis. So, in other words, that side of the street, the eastbound St. Dennis is next to Sacred Heart Old School, actually, right there. But there's no mention of adding a lane. It just says eastbound St. Dennis.
Okay. It just, it just didn't, I couldn't figure it out.
Didn't register, okay.
I have nothing against it. I was just, one clarification, okay? Thank you.
Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Ordinance number 8109, 8109. Bill number 9064. Mr. Jones makes a motion for a second reading that is seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $37,000 from an asset forfeiture fund in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for police training and the purchase of various equipment for the public, the police department.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a third meeting that's seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance amending general fund budget to reflect $37,000 from the asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the police training and the purchase of various equipment for the police department.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this matter, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Bill number 9064 passes and becomes ordinance 8110, 8110. Next item on the agenda, new business. Item number one, board appointments. Mr. Hinky.
Yes, I move to reappoint Ben I., 985 Washington Street, to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Hinky makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect the motion carried. An appointment being made. I'm not making that tonight.
No, I'm doing Gretchen Crank.
Mr. Hinky, you have a second one?
Yes, I'd like to, I move to reappoint Gretchen Crank, 111 St. Catherine, to the Landmark and Historic Commission.
Motion made by Mr. Hinky, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No further board appointments? Item number B, resolution. Resolution 976.
Resolution supporting the city of Florissant application to East West Gateway Council of Government Transportation Improvement Program fiscal years 16 through 19 for the North Lafayette Street reconstruction phase two.
Mr. Hinky makes a motion for a second reading of this resolution. That is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Read the resolution a second time, please.
Resolution supporting the city of Florissant application to East West Gateway Council of Government Transportation Improvement Program fiscal years 16 through 19 for the North Lafayette Street reconstruction phase two.
Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a third reading of this resolution, as seconded by Mr. Jones. Roll call vote, please.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Florissant application to East West Gateway Council of Government Transportation Improvement Program fiscal years 16 through 19 for the North Lafayette Street reconstruction phase two.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this resolution, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that resolution 976 has passed. Item C, bills for first reading. 9066.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B5 ordinance number 7738 to allow for the addition of a barbecue cooking area for a sit-down carryout restaurant for the property located 8471 North Lindbergh.
9067.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to AJB's Barbecue, LLC, DBA, AJB's Barbecue, to allow for the operation of a carryout delivery restaurant for the property located at 18 Patterson Plaza Shopping Center.
9068.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Enterprise Leasing Company of St. Louis, LLC, DBA, Enterprise Rent-A-Car to allow for the operation of a vehicle rental facility for the property located at 1101 North Highway 67.
9069.
Ordinance amending Title III, Schedule III, stop intersections, Table III, B, two-way stops by adding Cortez at Ensenada northbound and southbound.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a second reading on this bill. That's seconded by Mr. Hinky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Sorry. Ordinance amending Title III, Schedule III, stop intersections, Table III, B, two-way stops by adding Cortez at Ensenada northbound and southbound.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a third reading that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Stand by. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I just wanted to commend Mr. Jones on this. I know the Traffic Commission has not been in favor of this the last couple of times that this has come up before. And I know it's always difficult. None of us like to override the Traffic Commission. But I think this is a good compromise with putting this as a temporary six months and giving it a trial and see what happens. I think it's a real good use of our time and energies that way, rather than just completely override them. At least we can give this a chance, and he can see with the residents and see if it works or not. So, thank you.
Yeah, but I also comment that I happen to use that as a cut-through, like most people do, to get to Roberto's or those places. And we often see cars really flying up and down Cortez, so I can understand how the residents feel up there. Clerk, please poll the council.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Amending Title III, Schedule III, stop intersections, Table III, B, two-way stops by adding Cortez and Ensenada northbound and southbound.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Bill 9069 passes and becomes ordinance 8111, 8111. Bill 9070.
Ordinance amending revenue account number 03403300. Miscellaneous revenue in the amount of $8,200 and appropriating the sum of $8,200 from capital improvement fund to budget account number 036149 capital additions. Police for grant received from the State of Missouri Department of Public Safety to purchase ballistic shields.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading. That is seconded by Mr. Hinky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance amending revenue account number 03403300. Miscellaneous revenue in the amount of $8,200 and appropriating the sum of $8,200 from the capital improvement fund to budget account number 036149 capital additions. Police for the grant received from the State of Missouri Department of Public Safety to purchase ballistic shields.
I'll make a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Revenue account number 03403300. Miscellaneous revenue in the amount of $8,200 and appropriating the sum of $8,200 from capital improvement fund to budget account number 036149 capital additions. Police for grant received from the State of Missouri Department of Public Safety to purchase ballistic shields.
Final, prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Bill 9070 passes and becomes ordinance 8112, 8112. Bill 9071.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $60,000 from the Park Improvement Fund to budget account number 096147 capital additions for the Nature Lodge Erosion Repair.
Mr. Shildroff moves for a second reading on this bill. That is seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $60,000 from the Park Improvement Fund to budget account number 096147 capital additions for the Nature Lodge Erosion Repair.
Mr. Lee moves for a third reading, as seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Application of $60,000 from the Park Improvement Fund to budget account number 096147 capital additions for the Nature Lodge Erosion Repair.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Bill 9071 passes and becomes ordinance 8113, 8113. Next item on the agenda, council announcements. Mr. Jones.
I'd like to bring to everybody's attention a couple of emails, a couple of sites.
Next item on the agenda, council announcements. Mr. Jones.
Um, I'd like to bring to everybody's attention a couple of emails, a couple of sites. Uh, we have, the first one is, uh, www.bridgestonlandfill.com. I'll give you a little bit what's happening in the landfill. Then on the other side of it, the same landfill, is westlakemom@gmail.com. And coming this Thursday, Fuzzwrap, which oversees, uh, a lot of the community cleanups, uh, here in Saint Louis, uh, is having a meeting, uh, at, uh, the Hazelwood Civic Center, Thursday, January twenty-ninth, at seven PM. And that is Fuzzwrap. Uh, they're the ones doing the cleanup in Berkeley and at Mallinckrodt in the city of Saint Louis.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, going on with Mr. Jones about an email, I received an email a couple of days at, from work, um, from, uh, Consumer Recall, Mean Green Cleaning Supplies. I don't know if anybody has any, but, um, they're, they're on a recall. It states that they have no ammonia ins, or, yeah, no ammonia inside the product, and it does. But it does state, people have, um, mixed it with bleach and it causes toxic fumes. So if you got any Mean Green Cleaning Supplies at home, make sure you check that, um, check that out, so if you don't, if you do use it, you'd be safe using it. Thank you.
I just want to mention that this Friday will be the postponed Guns and Hoses event that benefits backstoppers. That was postponed during the events that happened in Ferguson, the eve of Thanksgiving, which is when it's normally held. I still have a few tickets remaining. If anyone is interested in purchasing a ticket to the Guns and Hoses this Friday, you can call me at three nine five sixty-eight thirty-eight, three nine five sixty-eight thirty-eight. Your honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a year ago or so, the council, uh, directed the administration, or expressed that the administration today would like to, uh, spend money to resurface the tennis surface at Tower Park. Uh, and I, as you know, I, I did not, uh, expended, I did not spend those expenditures. I told you that I would, wanted to pursue a grant and, uh, see how that went, and I'm happy to report that, uh, we just got notified from Saint Louis County Park Commission that the grant administrator, that we, that our grants were approved in round fifteen, and that we were given the almost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the resurfacing of the tower court, uh, tennis court. So I'm very pleased to, uh, give you that information tonight. Speaking of, uh, the most popular sports in town, we, we, you know, while we're on this subject, I would like to encourage, uh, those that are interested in tennis to, uh, to step forward and try to get some youth in, interested in that wholesome activity, and try to get, uh, a rebirth in, uh, in the interest in tennis in, in the city of Florissant. And, uh, a sport that is growing is the disc golf, and, uh, so we're looking for leagues and teams to play the discourse, uh, regularly this year at Donegan Park, and, uh, we've made some improvements to the horseshoe pits at Bangor Park. We've got new restrooms there for the convenience of all the parkgoers at Bangor. And Archery Range has, uh, received a renovation, they got new targets, uh, out at Coke Park, uh, and that is actually a very used facility. I, I, I'm up at Coke Park, uh, quite a bit, and I see the archer, uh, archery aficionados using that facility quite often, so happy to, uh, report that we have, not everybody's a softball player or soccer player or whatever, we got a lot of other activities on our menu. Uh, speaking of menus, we had some, uh, some discussion tonight to make our mouth water. We also, uh, had a ribbon cutting for Sweetie Pie's, uh, last Friday, and, uh, owner Robbie Wilson was on hand, uh, along with the Oprah Winfrey, uh, Network, was filming the, uh, ribbon cutting. We don't actually have a, uh, a press release on that particular item, because they have some, uh, some copyright, uh, that they protect, and they're going to actually issue their own press release, uh, kinda like Culvers had that same request, and we're, uh, we're certainly happy to honor that. Had another ribbon cutting not long ago at, uh, the Curves, uh, which is now, it's a Jenny Craig outlet also. Uh, this is up there in the, uh, Plaza, uh, what's the name of that, Waterford Plaza, Jackie? Uh, where Rizzo's is located at. Uh, they had a lot of patrons on hand that day, they were all getting in shape. The Florissant License Office is going to remain, uh, open during the appeal process. There's been a lot of discussion about the, uh, the state of Missouri taking the Florissant License Office away from, uh, the Florissant Rotary, uh, and that is being appealed, and we appreciate all the support, all the letters of support, uh, to the state, to the governor, and to the Department of Revenue, uh, expressing support for the, uh, the job that the Rotary has done. They've done an outstanding job in not only, uh, uh, running that office in an efficient manner, uh, giving great service, but they have poured all the profits from that office back into the community, those, to those of us that are less fortunate, the Mary Grove Home for, uh, abused and neglected children, uh, the Valley Industries Shelter Workshop for developmentally disabled adults, and the Team Food Pantry, which is a ministry of all the different denominations here in the Florissant Valley, teaming together to feed the hungry. And, uh, in addition to that, they gave money to the Joplin tornado, to the Ferguson tornado victims. Uh, they have scholarships for high school, all the different high schools, uh, students in the area. Uh, so, uh, those are, that's two-point-three million dollars, uh, over the last twenty years, and, uh, that money will be sorely missed if it's, uh, if it's diverted away from Rotary. Um, I was back in the schools, uh, a couple weeks ago, I was at McClure North, and, uh, today, uh, I was at McClure High School, uh, to talk with them about the progress of equal opportunity in the five thousand years of recorded history of mankind, helping me